I'd like to call this meeting to order. May we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patty, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Moreno.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marciano. Councilmember Woods.
Here, ma'am.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Litt. Here. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Ah, announcements and presentations. Who's going to do the resident opinion survey? How are you?
I'm good. How are you doing?
I'm well. Mr. Joseph St. Germain.
That is correct. He's checking my memory as to where everything was. Sure enough, I got it. Do you mind if I put this down? All right, before I get started, I just want to say, ladies and gentlemen, esteemed councilmembers, thanks for having me here this evening to present the results of the Palm Beach Gardens resident opinion survey. Before I get into the detailed results, first of all, we're going to take a look, and I have about 10 minutes to go through this, and I'll probably try to do it in less lead time if you have any questions. So I'm going to take a fairly over 30,000-feet look at what the results say. And before we get into the results, I want to say overall, they're very positive. And the reason I want to say this at the start is because if you're anything like me, as we go through this, you focus on how can we improve? How can we get better? And that's what I do. I do it in my business every day. However, I'm going to take this moment to say, overall, your residents are satisfied with the job that the city is doing. So for this study, we talked to 400 Palm Beach Gardens residents. At the end, it was weighted, the results were weighted by age and gender to make sure they're representative of the population of the city. So first question, what's the number-one reason you've lived in Palm Beach Gardens? And throughout this, we are going to compare the results from this year, 2015, and 2006. And these top four answers have pretty much been the top four in some order in every year that we've done this. Why do they live here? Family lives here. It's a nice upscale community. My work or my school is here. And the weather. As a transplant of Minnesotan who also lives in Florida now, I totally understand that 12%. It's very close to my heart personally. What's the number-one concern you have about Palm Beach Gardens? Traffic's number-one? In every single city or county survey I have done, traffic is always in the top three, even in smaller areas. So that's never a surprise for us. About 1 in 5 of your citizens have no concerns about Palm Beach Gardens, and then growth and development and crime are also concerns of citizens in Palm Beach Gardens. 94% of your citizens recommend living here. That's a strong number. And also, 85% are satisfied or extremely satisfied with the services they're receiving from the city. Over 2/3 of your residents feel the city is providing all the services that it should be. When we asked the follow-ups a question of the 31% who wanted other things, the question was, how much would you be willing to pay for those other things? The majority said zero. When we looked at satisfaction with city departments, specifically Fire Department, Parks and Rec, Police, satisfaction from 2015 is down slightly, but overall across the board, these are high numbers, percentages in the mid-90s and high-80s of satisfactions for the Fire Department, Parks and Rec, and the Police. Ratings of value of return on taxes paid, the great taxes question. Excellent, very good, about half of your population believe they got excellent or very good return, and another, so 78%, at least, good return on their taxes. The average citizen believes about 17% or 1/6 of their taxes goes towards funding city About 1 in 5 of your residents have contacted someone in the city in the last 6 months. About 5 out of 6 considered them friendly. 3 out of 4 thought they were effective, and a little over half rate the effectiveness of city communications as effective. The tough thing with communications of any government entity, when we have a question like this, whether it's here or anywhere, communication is a two-way street. You can communicate as much as you can, but someone has to be listening. And when you're sending out some information, you are competing not only with what they're watching on television, the picture of their 6-year-old niece that had their first day of school today, and also all the ads that they see by Coca-Cola, Budweiser, et cetera. So communications will always be a difficult thing for a government entity, just compared, you know, because your budget isn't Coca-Cola. If it is, I'm available. I can work for you guys. Awareness of city meetings and website. Awareness that the city council meetings are, you can listen to by phone, you can stream it online, or that it's posted online after the meetings, is fairly low. And the awareness that the city has a website is high, however, the majority of your residents have never been to the city website. How do they prefer to receive their information? For the most part, they want mail and email. However, when we ask, how do you get your news? TV, internet, printed newspaper are your top 3. So what they want, how they want to receive the information, and how they actually get it are 2 different things. Growth and development. Now, this is the one area where the differences between 2015 and 2017 especially are fairly different. I do want to note that for the science and high-tech projects, the wider range of housing types, and the more density by taller buildings on I-95 and PGA corridor, the wording was slightly changed this year because it was better suited for the current times, which makes it a better question for this year. However, it makes comparisons to previous years problematic, because you don't know if the difference is, is it a shift in public opinion, or is it a shift because the question has changed? However, growth and development, for the most part, is favored in science and high-tech projects, purchasing green space, and a slight favorite of a wider range of housing types. It is not favored, the more density by taller buildings on I-95 and the PGA corridor is not favored by the majority of residents. Finally, satisfaction with growth and development. The areas that receive the highest satisfaction, restaurants, shopping, retail, streetscape. People like more restaurants and more shopping in their cities. At the bottom, commercial and residential developments. That is a very 30,000-feet. I'll be doing the 85-slide presentation afterwards, if you'd like to go through the whole thing. But I do, at this point, want to open up to any questions, if anyone has any.
Anyone on the council have questions? Matthew?
Yes, you said you polled 400 residents. Why is that a representative sampling of the community?
The sampling error is 4.9%, meaning if any answer is at 50%, that means the true answer is somewhere within 5% of that number. When we do a lot of, we do a lot of government projects, for the most part, we usually do something around 400, just because that's within a sampling error that people feel comfortable with. If you increase the sample size up to, say, 1,500 people, which is a significantly higher cost, the error only goes to approximately 2.5%. So it's a nice sweet spot of nice error within that. So that's, the bigger question when you're sampling is to make sure you're, that's why we ask the demographic questions at the end, age, gender, income, where, you know, what ZIP code they live in. That also shows the representativeness, which has been the same from each study that we've done.
Just a quick follow-up question.
Yep.
And I'm sure these are questions that we all ask ourselves.
Yep.
When we're reading these polls. How do you calculate the sampling error? How do you know what your error rate is?
Well, lack of better phrase, there's an equation for that. And the one thing with sampling error, to double your precision, to, or, you know, take your sampling error down by half, you have to increase your sample size by 4. So there's a level, that's why that tends to be a sweet spot of precision for folks. So admittedly, I don't know the equation for sampling error off the top of my head, but I can look that up and get that to you.
Any other questions? Observations? Mark?
I don't have really a question about the results of the survey, but just in general, as surveys are being done now, you know, just through political campaigning and through the media as a whole and the populace as a general, how confident are you feeling about surveys as a whole? How are people responding to the questions? How many people answer their phones compared to the past? And I'm not suggesting that this particular survey is inaccurate, but this is a question that I have going forward. It gets harder and harder to get your pulse on the community as a whole, just given, you know, the concerns about people answering their phones.
No, you're right, and it's a problem I get to face every single day. You look at the response rate on telephones, 15, 20 years ago, you'd have 20% of their people answer the questions. Now, it's around 9%. For this particular study, we tend to be a little bit above the national average, around 11 or 12%. The one thing, you know, 10 years ago, we could get a significant sample just from calling people on landlines. Doesn't work anymore. 2/3 of the people are cell-only. So that's why this is some landline, some cellphone, because, and those aren't always, those are a little bit harder to do, because people are more sensitive about doing, getting a call from a random number, even though all of our numbers, they look like a Palm Beach Gardens number. It is a difficult process, and it gets harder every day. However, at the same time, that's why we do some weighting. That's why we always ask those demographic questions, just to make sure it's representative of what your county looks like, because we can always compare what we did to the census and compare those 2. And those have always, at least in the iterations of this survey, have been similar.
Quick follow-up question?
Mm-hmm.
If you don't mind. So the people that you actually speak to, are they, are you as confident in their responses as maybe the past, but maybe you're getting less people that you're actually getting a hold of? Is that fair to say, or not really? Or you can't even make that assumption?
It's, I don't want to make that assumption. I mean, I would be happier if it was 15 years ago and our response rate was higher. You know, basically, there is a level of error, it's unknown error. At the same time, I mean, responses are similar, and then sometimes you look at some questions and look at, like, face validity. For example, when you look at the percentage of people who want to be emailed in 2006 is around 8%, and 10 years later, it's a much higher percentage. That's what, frankly, with our thing, sometimes you have to look at the results and say, all right, do some of these things just make sense from that perspective? So you're kind of doing a little bit more data triangulation to feel confident results. So my overall tenor would be, yes, we're confident in the results. We just have to do it every year this goes on. We have to do our job a little bit better, but that's what we continue to do.
Rochelle, do you have a question?
Where does the 400 people come from? Where do you pull your random sample from? Just the phone book, the address list? We're a mixed community in terms of gated and non-gated. How do we make sure that we're getting coverage from all the areas?
One, there are companies that have lists of numbers. In fact, their job is get a list of numbers. The nice thing with phone numbers, I know what they all are, whether they're all working or something, I don't know. 561, 000, 0001. And they have gone through and called all those numbers to see what are legitimate and what are not. So we purchase from them. Beyond that, that's why we ask the demographic questions on the end. Like, for example, the percentage of responses by ZIP code, the 3 years we have done this survey, have been approximately the same percentages each time. The percentage of people who lived in a gated versus non-gated community are about the same each time. For example, I think the percent who lived in a gated community was slightly over 50% versus non-gated slightly under 50%. So that's why, that's frankly why we ask these demographic questions now, to make sure these answers are representative of what everyone would say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, great.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right. Next on the agenda, items of resident interest and board committee reports. Anybody, Rochelle, would you start?
Last month's meeting was on the eve of the hurricane, so we kind of got to important business before that time. So this report was scheduled to be given last month, but I'm going to give it this month instead. On August 16th through the 19th, the mayor and I attended the Florida League of Cities' 91st Annual Conference at the Marriott World Center in Orlando. I'm going to give you a brief overview of what happened at that meeting. On Wednesday, August 16th, I went up early and attended a special 4-hour seminar on the implementation of Amendment 2, dealing with medical marijuana. This was an excellent program sponsored by the Florida League of Cities Center for Municipal Research and Innovation, and I'll go into a little bit more about what they had to say when we address Ordinance 22 at the second reading next month. On Thursday, I attended the city's 101 workshop for newly-elected municipal officials. It reviewed the structures, functions, and services provided by Florida's municipalities with insight into policy development and implementation. Mayor Moreno and I attended a panel discussion on the opioid epidemic, featuring Palm Beach County's own state attorney, Dave Ehrenberg, and it was moderated by Boca Raton Mayor and Florida League of Cities President, Susan Haney. On Friday, the mayor and I attended the vacation rental workshop, where the property rights of homeowners versus those of rental companies and property owners who rent were discussed in light of the 2014 state law that prohibits municipalities from prohibiting vacation rentals or from regulating them. In fact, one of the overarching themes of this year's conference was home rule, and how, in particular, this past legislative session attacked it from all sides, and that we can expect more of that in the future in the next session. The history of home rule and preserving the right to local self-government was particularly enlightening. We also attended Public Records and Increasing Transparency Through Technology, where we discussed Senate Bill 80, which was one of the positive pieces of legislation that came out of the last session, and was aimed at curbing the abuses associated with the public records laws. And the session on the homestead exemption, what it will cost, who will pay, and can it be stopped. Talked about the potential impacts of Amendment 1 and how it may not provide the tax breaks that Floridians are expecting. There was wireless communications infrastructure preparing for 5G, related to the issues of the commercial uses and public rights of WAI, and we'll be dealing with that when Ordinance 23 comes up again next month for a second reading as well. The keynote address at the opening session was particularly moving. It was former Dallas Police Chief David O'Brien, who threw his leadership during and after the tragic events of the targeted police shootings of July 7, 2016, calmed the city of Dallas and the nation. Brown's 33-year history with the Dallas Police Department and the personal and professional tragedies that he endured made him a beloved and inspirational leader. He was the first one to use a robot to detonate C4 explosives to neutralize a suspect. He had a profound effect on me. My kids happened to be at the Omni Hotel in downtown Dallas that night when everything went down outside their window, and I'm glad that Chief Brown was the one at the helm. And I know the mayor, council, and I are just as confident in the abilities of our own chief step, and I would like to present him with this copy of Chief Brown's book that we got at the conference. So it was a busy and informationally-packed 4 days, and I look forward to becoming more involved with the League of Cities and our Palm Beach County chapter in representing the city again next year.
Thank you. Matthew?
Okay, I've been told that people are interested in what we do when we're not sitting here. So I'll give you a quick rundown. Ribbon-cutting at La Plazada, Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee, I attended a chamber breakfast, I attended a League of Cities luncheon, I attended our own traffic workshop, I attended the forum club, I attended the Gardens Women's Club, attended another chamber breakfast, a bizpact lunch, and I had many, many, many constituent meetings, which leads me to a shout-out for our city manager, Ron Ferris. When you talk to constituents and they have issues, or when they call me with issues, which I love, and I talk to the city manager, he immediately gets it done. He takes the call, he immediately deals with it, and it is just a pleasure. And it's always a pleasure talking to him, because it's always a humorous interchange and a pleasant interchange. So I want to shout out what a great job this man does and how he gets his staff to work together to solve all the problems when our constituents have legitimate problems that need to be addressed. So thank you to our city manager. Something else, I'm going to follow up on something that Rochelle said that I think's an important point, and it's home rule. I had occasion to talk to a member of the Florida House leadership last week about home rule. And I told him that this is going to be something that I'm going to do and that I would encourage others who care about this issue to do. I told him that whether or not someone's our friend or not, whether the same political party or not, if they attack home rule, I'm going to not support them. I'm not going to support them financially, I'm not going to endorse them, I'm not going to vote for them, and I may well work against them. And I would encourage other people who are like-minded to send that message to our representatives and members of the Florida Senate as well. That's just my pitch for home rule.
And it's a good one. Thank you. Carl?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Rochelle. I always go a little bit different direction with my presentation. We all went to the meetings with the mayor, I think we went to the meeting with Brian Mass. That was excellent. You did very well at the mayor breakfast the other morning. Thank you for that. Ron and I have 2 very large traffic, bringing up traffic on this, sir. We have 2 very large traffic issues going on in the city, and those will probably be coming to light in the next month or so, and now it's probably going to be delayed because of the amount of debris we have to pick up. So next couple of months, I'll be throwing some stuff on you guys that'll probably be very good for the city. I did get an invite to speak at one of our developments, because they were having some daytime burglaries. I won't ask the chief to speak on it. Some of them were the common leaving the garage open. One lady legitimately got a window broke into. Luckily, she had her alarm on. But these were daytime burglaries, so they asked me to come speak, and the chief came along with K-9 officer and another major, and they gave an awesome presentation. Chief, I appreciate that. They were bragging on it long after we left, and I think we even had a small canine demonstration out in the parking lot of this community, and they loved it. So hopefully, you know, we'll do that some more. The good thing about that meeting was, even though this development had a couple daytime burglaries, right after that, we got into a pursuit with a couple of bad guys in, do you remember the development? It was Windsor, or the Isles or something up here on military?
Ended up in the Isles.
Ended up in the Isles, and which is catty-corner from this development, which is Magnolia Bay. And they ended up catching 2 guys, I think, walking out of the develop, walking out of this guy's house with a gun. And one of the neighbors called this guy in and said, you know, some things are suspicious sometimes, but this guy walking out of the house during the day with a weapon is, so they called the police. We got into a pursuit, and our canine got to bite one in a certain area, and he lost some stuff. So congratulations to him. Welcome to Palm Beach Gardens. But big things coming up for traffic that will be, myself and Ron will be presenting over the next couple of months, and that's all I have. Other than all the meetings that we all go to, that's all I'm going for right now. Thank you.
Mark?
I can't top that, but, so, yeah. Anyway, you know, it was an interesting month because of the storms and everything. I hope everybody came through okay, and we all got very lucky, and I'm sure we'll have a report here soon. As far as the meetings, you know, it is nice to go to the meetings and talk to our constituents at the various planned events. I think the unplanned events and communications with our colleagues and neighbors is probably the best part of this job. One of the, a couple of highlights really that I wanted to mention, of course, Maria did a wonderful job at the chamber the other day, even though the slide show was not cooperating with you. Peter and I did get a tour of the UTC building. Peter, where are you? There you are. And we were the first ones to get out on that rooftop terrace, and that was very interesting and a wonderful view. What a great project, what a beautiful building. It's going to be a great addition to the city. And I met with chief step and others, and he took me on a nice tour of the facilities. And it really does gain a lot of confidence in what our city does and how our fire and police staff are top-notch. Other than that, it was basically doing what we normally do, and if anyone has any particular questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Well, yes, for me, it was also another busy month, and not to mention, there was a hurricane thrown in, so we had a lot of meetings that were actually canceled and postponed, but, you know, over 20 meetings, blah, 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 blah. Yes, the mayor's breakfast, thank you all for attending. You all missed the opportunity to listen to 10 of the North End mayor-mayors speak about their cities. It was very enlightening. And I also attended the Palm Beach North Chamber Women in Business Tea Metropolitan Planning Organization Board Meeting. And as you can see from the paper, there's been much discussion about the Western expansion on Southern Boulevard. There's also the US-1 multimodal corridor study is underway, and if anyone is interested in attending a workshop on that, September 25th through 27th, there will be open charrettes from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Riviera Beach Marina Event Center. They are trying to do a lot of work on US-1 from south to north, all throughout our county, so I encourage you to learn more. I also attended the Metropolitan Planning Organization Governance Subcommittee Meeting, where we are actually trying to discuss some changes in the structure of the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Palm Beach County League of Cities Board Meeting and Membership Meeting, and there's also a newly-created Home Rule Subcommittee, which I have been appointed to. It is so important. Home rule is out of control. The assault on home rule is out of control, and if everything in the legislature takes place, it could cost the city probably, I think, Ron, we've talked about around $6 million? Is that the figure? I'd like to know how we're supposed to pay for that. So I also attended the North Palm Beach Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs, the FDOT Workshop. I'd like to do a shout-out to the 50th anniversary of the Palm Beach Gardens Women's Club. They actually had their little, their soiree right before we had our council meeting last 2 weeks ago. Cultural Council of Palm Beach County, Mark and I actually attended, they had a Made in Palm Beach Gardens preview show, where all the artists that were represented are from Palm Beach Gardens, and several of the artists have actually had displays out in the waiting room area. So bala Palm Beach, they're also celebrating their 25th anniversary, and the reason I bring that up is because they have been in business in the city of Palm Beach Gardens for 25 years, and they had a season premiere kind of sneak peek the other night, so I attended that. I'd like to give a shout-out to the Palm Beach Post for coming and interviewing us about our debris, and the pile is getting larger and larger. And I just want to say that I am very impressed with how quickly we've been able to pick up as much as we've been, much as we have picked up. But I would also like to say that we are very, very lucky about, all that we are doing is having to pick up debris. We are not having to worry about potable water, we're not having to worry about a lack of electricity, the lack of roofs, the lack of homes, the lack of food, places to live. So I just ask our residents to be a little patient about the debris pickup. We're actually ahead of the rest of the county. I can brag a little bit about that, since our teams were in place, ready to go at 7:00 the morning after the hurricane, and we have 9 trucks going all over the city, and it's not, they're only in 1 neighborhood, they are in all the neighborhoods. It takes time to take those trucks from wherever they are over to the debris site and back to where they have to go, and we have to have a monitor there with each pickup. So sometimes you might see some- So, sometimes you might see somebody standing around looking like he's doing nothing. He's actually, he or she is actually a paid monitor to make sure that all the debris that's getting picked up is actually from the city. Did I, am I taking over anybody's comments? Ron, were you going to say any of this?
Okay, saying it more than once sometimes.
I'll let you finish then. I'd really also, as Matthew was doing a shout out to Ron, I'd actually like to make a comment about our EOC, our Emergency Operations Center, and the staff that mans that EOC in times of crisis and emergency. And they were in that room for over 60 hours straight. They got along. They shared resources. They were, they are a family. They had each other's backs. They didn't care about how long they were in there. And to see the efficiency of what they do, and we are a model city, and I said this the other day at the chamber breakfast, we are a model city on how to do it right in an emergency. And I really, thank you. And I'd also like to do a thank you again to our Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue Personnel who joined the Palm Beach County Strike Team with their hurricane recovery efforts in the Keys who just got home, and thank you all. Other than that, I think I've said enough.
Mayor, I'm going to add one thing. Sarah, I know you're sitting out here too. Tomorrow night is the, it's getting near to the end of the Florida Department of Transportation workshops on everything that's going on, so they're going to start making final decisions on their, on their plans. It's tomorrow at, I know I'll be there. I think probably most of us will stop by at one point. It is, it's at the Marriott, so it's right around the corner. It's one of the reasons why I'm bringing it up. And it is from...
5:30?
It's five, yeah. Starts at 5:30. It's supposed to be two and a half hours, so if you guys want to come and start, you know, if you have an opinion or you have a question, tomorrow night might be one of our last times to get it in there before they start finalizing these projects.
Thank you. Okay. Comments from the public? I have several cards here. Principal of Palm Beach Gardens High School Larry Clausen. Name an address for the record. And following Mr. Clausen will be George Wicker.
Thank you. Mayor Marino, Mr. Ferris, City Commission, thank you for the opportunity to take a few minutes of your time. It's great timing, following what Mayor Marino said. First, let me introduce myself. My name's Larry Clausen. I'm the principal of Palm Beach Gardens High School. In my nine years as principal of Palm Beach Gardens High School, we have benefited from the outstanding relationship with the city of Palm Beach Gardens. The tremendous resources that the city has provided our school has been above and beyond expectations. First, I'd like to thank Jack Downey and Parker Recreation Department for providing us with the best athletic fields of any school in Palm Beach County. Second, I'd like to thank and commend Chief Step and Assistant Chief Storm for law enforcement support. Anytime we call, they respond immediately. In addition, the Ball Stars Basketball Camp and the Suits for Seniors Mentoring Program that Chief Step has committed to has made and will continue to make a positive impact on our students. Lastly, and the main reason I'm here this evening, is I would like to recognize Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue Department. Instead of hosting the city's annual 9/11 ceremony two weeks ago, which was scheduled, Palm Beach Gardens High School served as a shelter for more than 1,800 guests during Hurricane Irma. The school district in Palm Beach Gardens, Palm Beach Gardens High School was honored to serve our community at a time of crisis. Chief Byers, we would like to extend our deepest gratitude to Deputy Chief Brodel, Division Chief Basset, and all the paramedics who worked countless hours at the shelter providing much-needed medical care to our guests. In closing, again, I would like to thank the city of Palm Beach Gardens for all the services and support you provide our school. We look forward to continuing our great relationship, and if there's anything that we can do at the school to help the city, please give us a call. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Clausen. Mr. Wicker? Name an address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. My name's George Wicker. I'm at 124 Isle Drive in the Gardens. I'm here today to offer you guys a big thank you for all the hard work you and the entire city staff has done to get our community cleaned up as rapidly as you have. I mean, the work you've done is phenomenal. Initially, the Ballin Isles Community Association Board asked me to come and give you our personal thanks, but as you know, I get around the community especially a lot on my bicycle. And I've been by your debris pile over at Maris Hall, right in your neighborhood, Matt? And actually, I've been all over the city from one end to the other, and I can't believe what an amazing job all these hard-working people have done. I know they're putting in lots of overtime, and I have to tell you, the results show it because the community looks terrific, and I want to thank you all for that.
Thank you, George. Sandy Gronik?
Sandy Gronik, Gardens of Woodbury, 11198 Time Drive, Palm Beach Gardens. I'm here basically to say thank you to this, this council. Gardens of Wood, I've lived in Gardens of Woodbury for 28 years, and as Matt knows, I've said this before, we've always felt ignored, dejected, and rejected until this council. I'd like to thank all of you for responding to my numerous emails in a positive way, calling me and coming out and taking pictures, Councilman L, Councilman Lane. We can't thank you enough for making a meeting happen with Mr. Ferris, the city manager, to address the concerns that we've had for a couple of years now, and some were even longer, and we didn't realize that that would get done, and it did. And I have to thank Mr. Ferris for that, especially because I have to say, you got right on it. It's not something that we have ever experienced before until this council, and we truly, truly appreciate it. I put into record our correspondence. I'm not going to continue to email and get into things until you let me know that you've caught up with all this hurricane business and you've got a lot more on your plate. You know, we're not finished. I know that, but that, what we have to do has to wait until you've, you've finished with cleaning up the city and getting things back in order after this hurricane, and you have done a good job. I can't believe the debris piles myself. So, wanted to thank you again. It just pleased everyone in our neighborhood, especially those of us who live on Shady Lakes and the rest, and the board of directors. And again, I have to thank Mr. Lane because it never would have happened without you. So, thank you very much, and Alicia too, for all that typing. Thank you.
Thank you, and...
Very welcome.
Thank you. And I have your rec, your correspondence here, and as Mr. Ferris would say, it's what we do. Thank you. And next on our agenda, since I have no more cards, would be the city manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and council members. I have a few items to bring to your attention today. Every two or three months or so, our employee spirit team, they have a breakfast in the mornings, and the spirit team is a peer group of employees. And what they do is they recognize new employees, so everyone knows who they are. They recognize those who are being promoted, and they recognize employees who have begun, gone above and beyond the call of duty. And it's a peer recognition and team, and they also plan other events that are basically morale improvers. So, with the idea of peer recognition together, there was a small video put together to sort of recognize everyone's efforts in the, in the recent times on a couple of events. Post that presentation, which was on the September 15th, be, after that presentation, I'd asked Candace, who put together the video, to add a little bit more to it, and she has done that for us here this evening. Again, it was something that was kind of inspiring to our employees that I thought I'd like to share with you to go along with your story about what a great team we have and how everybody always just sort of pitches in and we get the job done, but we usually do it our way. So, if you would, you roll the presentation. Of course, we had a couple of things in the way of an eclipse and a hurricane to deal with, of course, but this is the Gardens' way. Of course, the eclipse was an exciting event for all of us to enjoy, and there were a lot of employees taking advantage and opportunity of seeing it, and all eyes were on the eclipse. And then all eyes turned to the tropics in the Atlantic to see what was going on with Irma. We activated the Emergency Operations Center September the 9th at 2:00 and spent two and a half days in two very cold, hard-floored evenings, sleeping on air mattresses. We deactivated on September the 11th at noon. As you can see, we're a happy group. We were preparing. We were planning. We were getting ready, and we were waiting. We even got the mayor involved. Then Irma showed up during the storm. Teams sprung into action from six response stations around town, keeping the roads open for our emergency response teams and our police to do their patrol. Afterwards, the initial push of debris off roads started, and we cleared all the roadways of debris and down power lines is what we're doing here. And there were some very large trees to remove and debris to get out of the way. Our team is always there for each other. One way we're always there for each other, we have a employee family shelter in our Cat Five Gymnasium. It's there protecting the families of all the employees or any of the employees who are working during the storm. We had our strike team respond to the Keys. We had two police tackle dispatchers respond to a plea from Monroe County Sheriff's Request for Assistance. Then on the last day of our EOC operation at dawn September 11th, staff paid honor to those who lost their lives that day in 2001 by raising the flag, symbolizing the start of a new day. And the next day, we were open for business. During the time of the hurricane, and thank goodness it was, had as little impact on us, comparatively speaking as it did, our police department responded to 2,846 incidents and calls for service, some self-initiated. There were 2,136 enhanced patrols. NorthCom received 596 calls to 911 and 4,455 non-emergency calls. There were six arrests ranging from domestic battery to trafficking during that time. And there were seven traffic accidents. Fire rescue responded to four calls for residential fires, only one within the city. One call for brush fire, 12 calls for automatic fire alarms, seven for public assistance, five for downed power lines, and 66 medical calls. 14 were at the shelter at Palm Beach Gardens High School. This was basically what we were doing pre, during, and just right after the storm. Post-storm, our rapid impact assessment and, and street clearing teams went to work around 7:00 in the morning on the 11th. They started their initial push to clear all the main roads and provide access for emergency response vehicles citywide moving debris. The initial push started at, like I said, at 7:00 in the morning. All roads were classified after they did their assessment as to clear debris, power lines or power lines and debris, so that when they went out to do their clearing, they knew what they were getting into. By 9:30, all roads were assessed. Here you can see the initial assessment that went out. There's a street maps of the purple ones. As you see, it's where the first clearing went. By noon, all the word roads were passable for emergency vehicles. They assessed at 7:00, cleared by 9:00, started clearing at 9:30, and were finished by noon, providing accessibility of our emergency vehicles to anyone who needed emergency services. First priority. The citywide debris removal, as of, started Wednesday the 13th at noon. We divide the city into seven different zones. We assign vehicles and equipment to each zone. Every zone has a different degree of vegetation, debris, and power lines down. Our objective is to first clear the main roads or the spine roads through the community so people can get in and out. Our secondary accomplishment is to go back in and clean the neighborhoods. So, we have a structure. We have a way in which we go about clearing roads. We're moving approximately 3,000 cubic yards of debris a day. We nearly have 40,000 at the end of today cubic yards. We're probably going to have over another 20,000 to collect to go. We needed 45 to 90 days to collect, but our real secret goal was to be done in 60. I think we will do that with debris, but apparently the Solid Waste Authority isn't ready for us yet. They are not ready to accept the construction and demolition debris, which we were scheduled to start picking up today. We were told by their staff that personnel, they have a shortage of personnel, and they have no one to monitor the construction and demolition debris, and no one else has yet to ask for it. We're the first to ask, the seldom that we're ready. and no one else has yet to ask for it. We're the first to ask, the seldom that we're ready. Therefore, they are delaying our efforts to clean up our streets for at least a week. Let's say at least next Tuesday. We're still collecting vegetation. We haven't stopped. Our dilemma now becomes, one, do we leave the construction and demolition debris on the roads, side of the roads? Or do we pick it up twice? Move it to a debris site and then move it to the Solid Waste Authority when they're ready to take it? Keep it in mind that FEMA will not reimburse two movements, they'll reimburse one. Staff will be meeting Wednesday to talk about that at our department head meeting and see what we can come up with as perhaps even other alternatives. So the Solid Waste Authority not being ready yet has put a crimp into our ability to clean up our city. But we will figure out an alternative and we'll let you know how that is. With that, that ends the storm and debris presentation. I would like to call to your attention and everyone else's attention that we have the Green Market opening, Suite 16, 16 years, starting Sunday, October 1st at 8:00. Invite everyone to the Green Market. It's back outside here at City Hall. And let's not forget the National Night Out Friday, October 6th from 6:00 to 9:00 here at City Hall. There'll be all kinds of demonstrations, canines, SWAT team, National Night Out, as you know, we do every year, and it's always a very successful and informative event. With that, that concludes my report for the evening, and thank you very much.
Any questions for the City Manager? Mark?
How much, Ron, how much construction waste do we have out in the city?
It's hard to tell at this point. We have a feeling, just from observation, that it would be less than 20,000 cubic yards. Could be anywhere from 15 to 20, and that's an educated guess.
And what kind of danger does that pose to the community by having it sit there for however long SWA would have to collect?
I don't know that it poses a danger, but it's certainly there. And depending on the debris and who may be playing in the debris, or what that debris may be, it's unknown at this point. Thank you.
Ron, quick question. What is the cost of cleanup?
Our initial estimation was about $2.4, $2.5 million. We're going to stick with that number for now, but it has a potential of going up, depending on what the decision is as far as collecting up the additional, the construction and demolition debris. It's been an interesting season. There've been some things going on with FEMA that are contradictory, as always. So we're moving forward with the $2.4 at this moment.
And that, the $2.4 is going to be paid for out of our reserves, correct?
That would be where the, yes, that's where it's designated, out of our unassigned reserves of the $23 million.
So we're lucky enough to have those reserves so we can pay it, because how long does it take for FEMA to repay us?
Three to four years, and then they come back and audit you and try to take money back away from you. But thank goodness that we're not having the repairs and renovations and the problems that other people are having or that $23 million be gone in a heartbeat. We have, you know, the obligation to pay upfront and then reimburse whatever FEMA reimburses.
I'll have more questions during the budget talk, so, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Everybody okay with the consent agenda?
I'm going to pull one of the items up for discussion. I want to pull, let me just get the correct description, Resolution 63 for discussion.
Okay. Should we approve the minutes with that poll? How would you like to do that, Max? Okay. Can we approve the consent agenda with that one, that resolution poll, please?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Resolution 63.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Patty, could you read the title, please?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution 63, 2017, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving additional special events for downtown of the Gardens, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Thank you. And staff has a presentation. Staff does have a presentation. Would you prefer the applicant to have their presentation first, as normally?
That would be fine, thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Kate Dewitt with Cottler &amp; Hearing for the record, representing ShopCor and this item for downtown of the Gardens. The request before you tonight is to allow downtown of the Gardens the ability to have additional special events on an annual basis on the property. Currently, the city code allows for a total of 12 special events for parcels with 11 or more, excuse me, tenants. As you know, downtown of the Gardens has upwards of 60 tenants. And so as a result of that, and as a result of, just in an effort to keep the events going at downtown of the Gardens, which they do so well, we're requesting a total of 36 events on an annual basis to serve those 60-plus tenants. Downtown of the Gardens is a regional entertainment district and serves our community very well in doing what they do best. Many of the events that they have are for fundraisers, nonprofits, community groups. And they're requesting this additional, this additional number of events. It'll be for an annual basis for up to three years. This applies for 2017, 2018, and 2019. But I do just want to note that this is not a blanket approval. Each individual event will have to come back to the city staff for a specific special event permit. So this doesn't circumvent the permit process in any way. They'll have to come back. The staff will review traffic concerns, performance standards, noise levels, signage, anything to that nature that would be typically associated with a special event. And staff will review that for any consistency with code and make sure that all of those things are in line. So this is specifically just for the number of events. All the details will be handled at the permit level. And we do thank staff greatly for bringing this before you expeditiously. They've been wonderful to work with in this item. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation.
Thank you. And does staff want to add anything?
No, I think the applicant reiterated the most salient point, which is really this doesn't preclude any permitting process that's going to be required for each individual event. All this is doing is providing a proportionate amount of events based on the size of the property and the number of tenants. We have done this before with Legacy Place and Midtown. So what the applicant will have to do is they will have to submit an individual special event permit, which will be vetted against all city codes and can be enforced accordingly. And if there's any violations, code enforcement can cite them. And through the special event permitting process, we look very closely at traffic circulation, at parking, at all performance standards, at noise compatibility, to ensure compliance with city codes.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone have questions? Rochelle?
This is for the next three years through 2019. How does that correspond with the changeover from downtown of the Gardens to the district? And what their plans are for right now? I know that can change.
It's the same, you know, the permit, this resolution will be for successors and assigned. So if ownership changes, it will run with the property. But again, it still does not preclude an individual permit from being waived. So no matter what situation, no matter what the configuration is ultimately of downtown of the Gardens, a permit will be necessary to be submitted for review. And if it does not meet the criteria, it will not be approved by staff.
I think it's important that that property stay as viable as possible during the transition phases and keeping the owners of, well, the stores and restaurants, allowing more people to come and see what's there and partake of them. I think this will help with that, too, and keep that a viable property as we go forward.
Thank you, Rochelle. Matthew?
Yes, I'll share with you my concerns. There's people who live in the landmark next door in Three Towers. And we're now expanding the number of events from 12 events, not to 24, but to 36, so we're tripling the number of events that these people have to deal with. I'm a big supporter of downtown of the Gardens. I was there two nights ago. On Saturday night, we had yogurt, so it was, I go there quite a bit. And I think it's a great, a great facility. And I also know what the financial circumstances are there, and I certainly, from a business point of view, want to help them in any possible way that we can to continue to be a viable business. My concern is the noise. And I just would like some type of assurance, and I spoke with the City Manager about this today, that before we, and let me give you one small story also. We were at the Gardens not too long ago, and we were at Cheesecake Factory. And we came out of there, and there was a band there, and it was blasting so loud, you couldn't even talk to each other. And I can only imagine what it would be like to live next to that. So I guess I'm looking for some type of assurance, and I had this discussion with the City Manager as to how we can balance the significant need to make this a viable project, especially during the transition years, as Rochelle mentioned, we absolutely have to do that. How we, as a city, can balance that with the needs of the residents? And I would either ask the City Manager, because we had this discussion, or Natalie, how we're going to do that. And I would invite either or both to discuss that issue, because it's a big one for me.
I'd be happy to address that. Some would have already, but I do want to emphasize the importance of our codes that we use, because a special event permit application is not a given when it's submitted. In fact, we have denied certain events at downtown of the Gardens before because of traffic and parking circulation, parking and circulation issues, as well as noise. So through our careful review, what we use are our codes to ensure that the events that are so important to the business and so important for the vibrancy of the center are compatible with the adjacent residents. Similar petitions such as Legacy Place, they're not mixed-use. Legacy Place is mixed-use zoning, as well as Midtown. And I think we've done a good job of balancing those special events that have also exceeded, you know, by 20 or so. A very comparable number for what downtown of the Gardens is asking. And downtown of the Gardens is actually the most square footage, or it's substantially more square footage than Midtown. So the number is comparable, and through the performance codes that we use, we can ensure that the events that are being held address compatibility with adjacent residents. And if we have a heads-up, that there have been issues in the past, such as noise issues, then we can be more proactive with code enforcement to ensure compliance in that respect as well.
Super. So you've given me what I want. I just wanted a commitment from you and your staff and the City Manager and law enforcement that we're going to watch this and be careful and judicious in the way that we grant these passes, and that you're cognizant of the issue, and that you'll work to protect the residents. And I got that commitment, and I'm content.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Matt brings up a good point, because we know what Jupiter's going through on the intercoastal. So we don't want to end up in lawsuits with, that are going to go on for years. But why is it just three years? Because downtown of the Gardens is going to be growing forever. Is this something that's within the, that particular, I mean, why can't we just do this indefinitely? So it's, it doesn't need to be revisited if we're going to look at every single application as a single, you know, application? Why are we?
They always have the option to, the applicant always has the option to come forward and provide for additional events and requests. You know, three years, is it a reasonable amount? It's sort of a balance when you try to forecast and, you know, given the changes of downtown and given all of these things that occur, we thought three years was a reasonable amount for us to say, okay, we're comfortable from a staff perspective of saying, okay, we are okay looking on the horizon of, and knowing that you're going to be submitting individual permits to exceed the number of events, similar to what other centers have done. They always have the opportunity to request additional ones as they evolve. And by then, we could, there could be co-changes as well. Our code is a living document, and we always like to update our special events code from time to time. And who knows, we might be able to create a proportionate amount of events per larger centers in our next Glitch List, because right now we have a one-size-fits-all. So literally, the same strip shopping center that has five tenants receives the same number of events as these large centers, which I think we can do a better job at looking at something like that. So I think three years is reasonable.
All right, thank, yeah, we definitely need to support downtown as much as we can. So, thanks.
36 is less than one a week, and I'm guessing that they're going to be at all different hours of the day. I'm sure we have a curfew or a cutoff point at which noise is allowed. So I'm comfortable with this, and I know how diligent our staff is with permitting. So may I have a motion in a second?
I'll motion to pass Resolution 63, 2017.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Oh, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we have no quasi-judicial, so I'll go right to Resolution 58. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 58, 2017, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a tax levy and millage rate for the City of Palm Beach Gardens for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018, directing the city clerk to forward a certified copy of this resolution to the Palm Beach County Property Appraiser and Tax Collector within three days after its adoption, providing an effective date for the purposes.
I'm opening the hearing.
Okay, good evening.
May I have a staff presentation, please, from Alan Owens?
Madam Mayor, members of the council. Alan Owens, Finance Administrator. This is the second public hearing regarding our fiscal year 2018 budget. It consists of two pieces of enabling legislation. First is Resolution 58, 2017, which will adopt the millage rate. And then second, the second reading of Ordinance 19, 2017. This meeting was duly advertised, a notice of hearing, and the budget summary ads were published on September 20th. There have been no changes since the first hearing on September 7th. So at the council's discretion, we can either go through the presentation again, or we could go to the required actions that would be necessary after the council makes their deliberations.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay.
I have no cards here, so I will close the hearing. May I get a motion in a second, please?
Okay, actually, Madam Mayor, if I may interject here. State statutes are very strict as far as the order of operations and things that have to be done. At this meeting, first of all, there has to be an announcement. The name of the entity, the city, has to be announced, the proposed millage rate, the rollback rate, and the percent increase over that rollback rate has to be publicly announced. So first of all, staff would recommend the motion before you. And then after that, again, the state is very clear, you have to adopt the millage, which would be done with a motion to approve Resolution 58, 2017. And then the last piece of action would be a motion to approve Ordinance 19, 2017 on second reading. So with that, I'll turn it back to council.
Thank you. Now, may I get a motion in a second? Or is there anything else?
We actually have to read it. Staff recommends a motion that the City of Palm Beach Gardens adopt a proposed millage rate of 5.6678 mils, which includes a debt millage of .1178 and an operating rate of 5.55 mils, which is greater than the rollback rate by 5.2671 by 5.37%. And with that, that staff recommends that you make a motion to approve Resolution 58, 2017, setting the final millage rate for fiscal year 2017, 2018 at 5.6678% mils. Now, we can have a motion on that resolution.
Now, may I have a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Rochelle, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, now bring it back for discussion. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. So now we continue on to Ordinance 19. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance 19, 2017, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting the budget for the City of Palm Beach Gardens for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018, providing a conflicts clause and a severability clause, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Okay. I'm going to open the hearing. Has anything changed since the first reading?
No, ma'am. There've been no changes since the first hearing.
And I, does anyone need a presentation? Okay. And I have no cards, so I will close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second, please?
Motion, Ordinance 19, 2017.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
And I'll bring it back for discussion. Okay, who's going first? Anybody?
It's going to be the same as the last.
It is.
Now we're 2.5 million dollars poorer.
Well, I actually have a couple comments, so, yes. And it is, it does have to do with, one, the depletion of our reserves by 10% due to Hurricane Irma, possible effect of state legislation on our budget, two, the 2 of six, 6 million, and we have not addressed how we replenish our reserves if they stay the same over the next several years. Effectively, the percent of reserves to the operating budget will continue to go down, and what happens in a catastrophe? So basically, I'm asking those questions more as, as an observation of why we should hold the millage rate the same, and why we should approve the budget as written. So.
Yeah, and that, that's basically the, the whole point here, is it would be easy to sit up here and try to, try to lobby for a millage reduction, but, because we're not going to be here long enough to feel the effects of that, and it may look good doing that in the short term, but I think in the long term, it may have a negative effect on the city, which is something that we need to make sure we're responsible for. There's a lot of uncertainty over the next number of years, maybe not this year, maybe not next year, but if truly the, the oceans are warming, we may have a lot more storms to be dealing with and cleanup. And I really wanted to try to push for a millage reduction. I really thought it was something that we could do, and I'm not saying that we won't in the future, but I really want to see what the legislature does first.
Amen. Anyone else? Rochelle, you look like you'd like to say something?
I, I agree with Vice Mayor Marciano on that. Also, with the growth that the city is looking to experience in the next couple of years, we have a couple of major developments coming on board. Our, our taxes will be going up in the future. I think looking at a millage redate, rate reduction at that time is definitely not out of the question, and it may be more appropriate than at this current time, as much as we all would love to do that during our first term.
Matthew?
I made my observations the last time, and I won't add anything to them.
Thank you. Carl?
I'm in agreement with everybody else.
That's it. I think we, we, our hands are sort of tied at the moment with all, all the catastrophes that have, are out there, from weather to legislation, so.
Well, and whether or not anyone else is listening, because it's the same people here tonight that they were here the other night, but to reiterate the point that, that the home set exemption reduction in 2018, assuming it passes the vote of Florida, which we assume it will, we have to make that assumption, the, the residents of the city and of the state, many of them are going to see a tax reduction as our debt millage reduces, and I know that's not really answering the question about operating expenses and operating budget, but it's still something that we can at least be comfortable knowing. But the disservice that the, the legislature did to those renters, small businesses, people whose homes don't have a value, a taxable value of over $125,000, they're not going to see the benefit that other homeowners will, which is something that I think needs to be out there, and make sure that people understand that even though the legislature may be trying to do something that sounds good on paper, it may not be helping the people that need to help the most, so, thank you.
Correct, and I think that number is $2 million to our city. Correct?
About, about 1.8 million per year.
There you go. I, I rounded up.
Yeah.
There's also the communications service tax and the loss of revenue from the occupational licenses, that the one's 1.6 million, the other's 2 million, so that's additional money that the city's not going to have.
So we're now going to be probably somewhere around 16 million. How long does it take to replenish to, say, where we are now, or where we were last week?
It, there's really no way.
It takes us years to rebuild that to a safe.
We'll have to have those discussions and build a strategy in order to be able to address these at later dates.
There's a lot of factors that play into things, and every year when we do. Yeah, we do our end-of-year adjustments and carryovers, and we'll look at the big financial picture at that time and be able to come back with some type of, a plan, as Mr. Ferris said.
Thank you.
Al still has a one rabbit left in that hat.
You better pull it.
I think that rabbit's been doing something else on that hat there.
Well, before, before we move on, I just want to say it was a very, very easy budget to read. When you look at the other budgets that are posted in the paper, they're awfully convoluted. And also, as was pointed out at the chamber breakfast and at the NCNC meeting tomorrow, if anybody would like to attend, City of Palm Beach Gardens does have one of the lowest millage rates in the county. So I applaud staff for doing that.
I'd like to just recognize all the department heads and their staff. They're involved in the budget process each year. I mean, they make, you know, that product very easy for, as you said, to read, so, kudos to everybody, and of course, Mr. Ferris for his, his leadership, so, thank you.
Well, it goes back to, we actually do less with more. I mean, considering our, our staffing levels right now, right now, with an increase of 15,000 people from 2007, our staffing levels are the same. So we are definitely doing more with less, and I, I applaud staff for doing that. So, having no further discussion, all in favor of the budget? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Cool. Okay. Here we go. Where's my gavel? Motion carries. All righty. Now, we are on to Ordinance 15, 2017. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance 15, 2017, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 86 Buildings and Building Regulations by repealing Article 2 Standards and adopting a new Article 3 entitled Flood Plane Management, adopting State of Florida Flood Plane Management Ordinance, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 86 Buildings and Building Regulations shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
I'll now open the hearing. Has anything changed since the first reading?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Peter Hoffine's Planning Manager here at Palm Beach Gardens. Nothing has changed since the first reading.
Thank you. Does anyone need an additional presentation? Okay, and I have no cards, so no one is wishing to speak. I will, oop, Max, he's got like that.
I just wanted, I, I just need to, need to say this for the record before, both before we adopt, or before you hear Ordinance 15 or 18. Just very briefly, it's, you'll notice a note on the bottom of your agenda that in accordance with Section 166.0413B of the Florida statutes, both these ordinances are being adopted as emergency ordinances, because as you're well aware, the, the governor did enact and declare, he did declare a state of emergency in the state, and suspended notice requirements for a myriad of things, but these were not included. And this ordinance, both of these ordinances have to be adopted no later than October 5, so that we can comply with the FEMA flood map requirements for the National Flood Insurance Program. That's why they're being adopted on a, as an emergency ordinance, because we were not able to satisfy the notice, the required notice requirements under the law, because these were due to be advertised on September 11. And as you might recall, the Palm Beach Post was not published on September 11. They also then failed to inform us that they weren't going to be published, and they didn't put them in the paper the next day, which still would have met our time requirements, and so here we are. And so that's why we had to declare this, these emergency ordinances, and I just needed to announce that.
Thank you. Okay. So we have no discussion? All those in favors? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now I will, we didn't get a motion?
No, there was never a motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. Let me backtrack. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Sure. Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt Ordinance 15, 2017.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Did I go out of order? Okay. Now. Okay. May I have the clerk read the title, please, for Ordinance 18?
Ordinance 18, 2017, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 78 Land Development of Division 10 Subdivisions by repealing in its entirety subdivision 6 Flood Plane Regulations in order to provide internal consistency with city code and to remove duplicative sections, reserving Division 10 and Section 78-531-78-540 for future legislation, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 78 Land Development shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Okay, and I'm guessing nothing has changed, and we're not, so we don't need a presentation? There, I have no cards, so I will close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second?
Yes, Mayor Marino, I move that we adopt Ordinance 18, 2017.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. I'm guessing there's no discussion? So all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Peter, you got anything to say? You're good?
Motion passes. Thank you very much, Ordinance 18. Now.
Thank you.
Since I always forget to do resolutions, items for council action discussion, city attorneys report, I'm sure there's no resolutions, correct? Okay. Any additional council action or discussion? Does the city attorney have a report?
Ma'am, I do not.
So at this time, at 8:25, I would like to adjourn the meeting.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you very much.